This is the regular meeting of the Geneva 304 School Board for August 25. And Bonnie, could you please call the roll?
Larry Cabeen.
Here.
Dan Choi.
Here.
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 Thank you and welcome, all of you. Pleased to have you with us. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. And I've asked an audience member to lead us in the pledge. Should I take it away, Mrs. Fuller? Mrs. Fuller?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is an attendance sheet in the lobby. And if you would like to register your attendance, you may sign that. Item two, approval of minutes. These are the minutes for regular session of August 11th and the executive session of August 11th. Bonnie, have you received any corrections or additions? Does anyone have any at this time? Motion to approve, please.
So move.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye. The next item is recognition awards, presentations, and public hearings. And item one on that is the Illinois State Board of Education Assessment Update. Would you like to say anything, or should we go direct to Shawnet?
Sure, I'll vamp while she's getting ready up there. You know, we've shared a little bit with you previously about the fact that the state of Illinois has, you know, made some shift with the performance and proficiency levels on the school report card, which is going to change how they report. You know, every year, the school report card comes out, tells us how we're doing. It's going to, and those accountability metrics, they've shifted though. So we've been trying to give you some information since we first heard they were going to be doing that. And Shawnet has a little bit more detail to provide you tonight. And we're going to keep coming back here before that data officially comes out in October, right?
October 1st. It was released embargoed.
Released publicly.
Yes, October 30th is when it is public for the parents. Yes, so thank you for the opportunity to share. And you are correct there. Actually, there was just information that was released on Friday that I have not had a chance to digest yet. That, so as you said, they're going to continue to release bits and pieces of this. The information they just released late last week relates to the ACT and how they're going to be using that as the, for the new proficiency and cut scores. Because as you recall, this is just, this will just be the second year. We have re-administered the ACT. And we will do that this spring of '26. So most of this information came from Dr. Sanders, the state superintendent's address about a week and a half ago. Again, I thought since it's relatively new, I'll kind of use information that they've shared with all of us that were on the webinar call. So the first question is going to, why is this change happening? As Dr. Sanders and Ray Clemente shared, when they created this cut scores in 2017, they created cut scores that they felt were too high and therefore mislabeled students who were on track for college and career as not being, in fact, on track or meeting proficiency standards. And I'll get into a little bit later what some of those standards were. But I think it's important on the onset, as well as a little bit later, I'll share what has not changed is the standards themselves have not changed, nor have the assessments that are being administered. Those are the same. So why the change? Again, as I stated, you know, there were a couple of reasons. First of all, you know, students within the country were not being compared to, on the same levels. So for example, a student may be coming to us from Florida, and they were proficient or excellent. And they would come to Illinois, and because we had different bands and different expectations, they would all of a sudden there be not proficient. So the idea was to, as a, you know, to become on par with the other states. So in the example that they shared, they shared how, if you take Illinois, which they have a, they surmise we were the top of the NAPES scale in their report. Our proficiency band just captured those last two out of five bands, where many other states not only had four bands instead of five, but the cut scores that were identified to be in those top two or bands, whether it was out of five bands or four bands, Illinois had a higher expected score. So for example, you'll see that in reading, Illinois expected a 236 in reading. And in math, they expected a 253 for that score. But in Connecticut and Florida, the expectations were lower. Again, they, same standards, same assessments. So the problem was that the levels were misaligned in not only the tests, but across the grade levels and as they related to those college and career expectations. And so if you recall, SAT had some set scores for that, and so does ACT, which we're moving to. But Illinois was taking the eighth grade IAR scores and making those the comparable to the college and career readiness instead of relying on the pre-ACT and pre-SAT assessments. So again, one of the goals is to make these for...
Can you, SAT, I understand.
Mm-hmm.
Can you just define?
Yes.
ISA and IAR for us?
Yes, thank you for asking. I know we have a lot of acronyms. So IAR is the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, and that starts in third grade. And that is administered to students in third through eighth grade. And it assesses English, Language Arts, and Mathematics. The ISA is the Illinois Science Assessment. And up until this past year, it was given in fifth grade, seventh, eighth grade, and 11th grade. This past year, it was included in the ACT. So it's the Illinois Science Assessment. And then the SAT. Even with the SAT, when Illinois switched to that in lieu of the ACT several years ago, SAT, a score of 480 for ELA was considered the lowest point of proficiency in English. And then a score of 530 in Mathematics was the lowest to be considered proficient. However, when Illinois adopted that, they expected a 540 in each English, Language Arts, and Math to be the lowest point of proficiency. So even when we adopted the SAT, we had a higher expectation than SAT, who goes by College Board Standards Expected. So again, we may have had students who took that and through the state of Illinois, maybe they were not proficient. But in terms of the likelihood of them garnering a C or better in a college course, they in fact had met that standard. So the solution that the state had for this problem was three-pronged. They wanted to work on the assessment, accountability, and then that system of support that the state would have in place for school districts who would need support based on the overall performance of their schools. So as the previous slide showed, in terms of the assessment, they just wanted to right-size those performance levels and the proficiency indicators. Accountability, again, they wanted to make sure that for the schools, the parents, the stakeholders, that the expectations were clearer. And that when those reports were produced and will come out later this fall, that again, they're clear, concise, and more easily understood by our stakeholders. And then again, that system of support is what is going to be in place by the State Board of Education to support schools that are in need of improved performance. So two key definitions to keep in mind are performance levels and proficiency. You'll hear that interchange quite a bit. But the performance levels, that's that kind of the range of scores, those cut scores that divide those into those categories. And the state is going back to, or is going to four categories from five. So you'll either be below proficient, approaching proficient, proficient, or above proficient. Again, those two green bands will count as meeting the expectation and meaning that the student is on track in their proficiency of that state assessment and for their grade level. So again, the one assessment is third through eighth grade. The high school assessment that is measured is the 11th grade. And then the Illinois Science Assessment for elementary and middle school. So what are they doing to realign the performance levels on all the tests? Well, they're taking all three of those tests that were, are given, and they're giving them all the same band of performance and same band of proficiency. So they're equating those assessments across the board for all of our students who take those. They've also released the new cut scores. So for example, in English, Language Arts, in grades three through eight for the Illinois Assessment of Readiness and the Illinois Science Assessment, you'll see the old and the new cut scores for ELA in math and in science. And then again, in the high school years, ninth, 10th, and 11th grade, they have the new cut scores for the ACT. And I'll talk in a bit here about what the impact is if we were to look at previous year's scores for Geneva. In this, oh, I want to add something here. The other thing that has remained the same, however, is that we will still have the student growth percentages that we'll be able to compare year-over-year growth of individual students or cohorts of students. So that will be something that will be the same, too. So while we will have, that's just based on the student's raw scale score that they receive. So that's really where you're comparing kind of year-over-year growth. So think of that kind of like as you, when you go in for just your annual checkup. So the impact of the change, from what the state is saying now, from what they see on the kind of initial run of the embargoed scores, they're seeing an overall increase in ELA and in math, and a decrease in science. So the decrease in science is because the data was collected in 2021. That's the data they used to set the band. And because that was that year where there was partial attendance or on days, off days, as we were coming back from COVID, there was limited representation and limited participation, is what was shared on the webinar with that. But as we just looked roughly at the previous spring scores, because again, we don't have this year's, in third grade...
Shawnet, wasn't science also, science was one that was only in four bands still, right? Or no?
Well, yes, but here, the other thing that changed with science is for many years, it's been two years that it's counted as performance. Before that, it was just participation. That's another reason for the dip. Yeah, you just had to have 95% of your students take the assessment to get the credit on the school report card. Where now, it's participation and performance. So anyway, in looking at the previous spring scores, in third grade, we see anywhere from, this is based on individual schools. In Geneva, our elementary schools, we see anywhere from a 15 to a 25% increase. In math, we see anywhere from a 20 to a 25% increase in overall proficiency in third grade. Fourth grade in ELA, we're looking at about a 30% increase, again, more or less in some of the schools, and a 7 to 25% increase in math. Fifth grade, we're looking at anywhere from a 5% to a 20% increase in our overall performance in ELA and in math, a 3 to 20% increase. Sixth grade, and you'll notice in the middle school years, there's actually less of a growth opportunity in the performance. So we are looking at anywhere from a 9 to a 13, 9% increase in ELA and a 13% increase in math. Seventh grade, 8% for reading and 7% for math. Eighth grade, an 8% in ELA and a 3% in math. So we do anticipate seeing an increase in overall percentage of students that are in that proficient or meets expectations category, those two categories at the end.
Just a quick question. You've gone through some numbers and talked about the increase in number of kids meeting the proficiency. Do we have the numbers of how much of that is based on the actual growth of the children being, and how much of it is due to the fact that they're changing the, they're changing the goalpost?
Yeah.
If you will.
I understand what you're saying. Excellent question. We don't have that yet, but that's that student growth percentage that is going to stay the same. So once they release those scores, we should be able to run that report and see like how many of our students actually themselves grew year-over-year. So yes, that is information we can bring back. Great question.
We do anticipate, I mean, that our growth is generally strong. And we anticipate it will continue to be, you know, obviously. But as Shawnet says, we'll have to take a look at that.
Yeah.
What she's talking about is just this preliminary look at, to your point, they've kind of changed that.
They moved the goalpost.
Yes, they moved the goalpost. So now that means we're going to see a difference in the number of students who meet that proficiency level.
Yes, but you're correct. For us, it'll be very important to look at those individual student growth, because that's what we want to see, is that every student is making progress and growing, regardless of what the end result has been moved to. In terms of the SAT, or I'm sorry, ACT, we switched back to that. The scores are very similar to what they were prior to our adoption of the SAT. So, and they are using the College Board Expectations. So an English score of 18, a math score of 19, and a science score of 19. You are, the likelihood of you obtaining a C or better in a college course is what they're looking for. So those are the scores they're setting. They also are talking a little bit about work keys, that a range of 17 to 19 speaks to the likelihood of you being successful if you're leaving high school for post-secondary endeavors, like straight to work or another field such as that. That's just, they're just talking about that as of Friday, so. And then I shared already with the science and the limitations with the science, that it was participation, bless you. It was participation only, it was limited participation, and that those scores were set during that intermittent year after 2020. Now it doesn't want to advance. Okay. More of what didn't change, if you remember that third circle is, was, you know, how they're going to support schools. So here are the summative designations that the schools will still receive, and these have not changed, so a school can be rated as exemplary. And that is just that idea that, you know, you have no...
Turn the mic a little closer to your mouth.
Sorry, Robin. So that's a school district that has no subgroups that are underperforming and that has overall higher percentage of students that are meeting the expectations. Those commendable, those are the groups. Those are schools that maybe have one subgroup that falls into that category that may be not as proficient, but is still, overall, they're doing well. And then we get into the targeted support, which is if you have one or more subgroups that is underperforming, comprehensive support is like the first year of a school that is underperforming. And then intensive support is beyond that first year. Many of our schools in Geneva do not have a subgroup of those categories that are identified as such, because you have to have 20 or more students in that subgroup in that grade. But we do have a few schools that do have subgroups. Some of those subgroups are free and reduced lunch, EL, special education, homeless, migrant, there's about 10 different, yes, there's about 10 categories. The other indicators that will remain the same as they put together the school report card are the percentage of value of all the indicators. So still for the elementary, 75% will be from the assessments that are given, the English, Language Arts, or I'm sorry, the overall proficiency levels, as well as the growth. And then the, I'm sorry, this is really small print. And then the English Language Learners' Progress to Proficiency. At the high school level, that 75% is made up of their overall ACT performance in English, Language Arts, and Math, the science assessment, which is again, now part of the ACT, their graduation rates, and again, for them, the English Language Progress to Proficiency. And if you recall an earlier presentation, perhaps last year, this time, progress to proficiency is students, once they're identified as eligible for EL services, the goal is to have them exited within five years. And then the other 25% is made up of your attendance rates and the climate survey, which is the Illinois 5 Essential. And then for the high school, it's those, as well as ninth grade on track for graduation. So there's still a little bit heavier weight at the elementary levels, which is grades three through eight. Middle school counts as elementary as it relates to the assessments, because again, there's a larger portion of the high school that's given for graduation rate, which is an important characteristic as well of our portrait of a graduate. And then this just gives the, I just want to share with you just the weights that each of those categories carry for the K8, which is really 3-8, and then the high school. Just so you can see what all goes into those overall reportings as they are created. So again, we anticipate, the state hopes to have this all put together and out to us by October 1st. Usually it goes out, you know, to press at the middle of the month. We get it around the same time, then it goes public on the 30th of October. They did share at the webinar a week and a half ago that to date, they're hopeful to make that October 1st date, but they could be a bit delayed. Any other questions on what they're changing for this year? And I'll do my best to answer, because again, we're kind of going off of...
I just was wondering, is this going to affect placement at all since we now have policies in place that kids automatically get into classes based on where they're testing or how we are choosing or determining which kids should be placed in A.E. classes at the primary schools?
So there's, I'm going to, there's two parts to your question. So first part is the Accelerated Placement Act, which, what has passed, that is for high schools. So yes, it will probably impact those students who would be eligible for advanced placement or automatic enrollment in the next most rigorous course, which is what the Accelerated Placement Act calls for. At the K8 level, we're expected to have, you know, policies and practices for identifying students and placing if available. So that, those scores would be used as well as we talk about placement for A and E in third, fourth, and fifth grade.
So will we change, because I think it was last year, we adjusted how many points were given for scoring. Does that mean the score will change that you have to have to get in? Or that's...
Those scores were primarily based on COCAT and MAP.
Okay.
For that matrix.
Which then leads me to my second question. Does MAP already align with these scores? Or we were kind of doing a different kind of assessment that way? And what will this then look like for parents? Because I know MAP is probably primarily what parents use in eighth grade and under to determine like where their kids are. And it would show us past years, like where they scored. So you can kind of compare, oh, my kid went down a little bit, or my kid went up a little bit, or maybe this was where the gap year was, or something. Is that, how is it going to look for parents? Or are they, this won't be so much individual for parents?
There will be individual reports for parents that will explain like where their students are at to compare to previous years. Like if you're taking like your child's fourth grade IAR report to their fifth grade IAR, I don't know how equitably you could compare those because they've changed the scores. And then in terms of interesting, you ask about MAP. They, in this summer, they just shared, webinars coming up later this week, they adjusted their norm score, norm scores as well.
Okay.
And it appears that they've lowered those as well.
So that might be important to communicate to parents this year, because if we all see a huge jump in scores and we're like, oh, our kid had a great year, and it's not that they didn't, but maybe there's also just some number leveling there.
Yes, yes. That will be forthcoming. Like we're, there's a number of us that are going to be attending the webinar this week.
Perfect, thank you.
Great question.
I do think to your point, parents will still see that MAP report come as it comes. I think at K8, that will still primarily be the thing that parents will see and look at. This is a, the state does report that they intend to get this data out sooner and quicker. That's been one of the kind of digs on this, is that they get the data to the schools and to parents so late that it kind of is not helpful from an instructional perspective. You know, these kids took this test last year. We're going to get it sometime in the middle of this year. You know, how's that helping us? And that's why we still use a tool like MAP as that kind of ongoing feedback. And for now, we'll continue to do that, right?
Yeah, we have the annual checkup and then the intermittent check-ins with MAP.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just a little bit confused. I know, first off, this is not your presentation. But the first two or maybe three slides talk about how the state of Illinois compares to other states.
Mm-hmm.
Why? I mean, are the other states changing? Are all the states going to the same rating? Or what, I don't understand why that was in there. It really has no impact on anything that's from page three down, unless, unless all the states are going to our new, Illinois' new rating system. Do you understand what I'm driving at? I mean, the logic is, I'm missing the logic here.
I, you want to go ahead first, sorry?
Go ahead, and then I'll...
I think the logic was, that's part of their, that's part of the state's rationale for why, maybe if you could go back to like slide three, right? Like that's part of their rationale for why they're making this change. They're not saying that...
Can't find it.
Uh, wait, back one.
There it is.
Nope.
No, it's the, it's the...
Yeah, okay, you were, um...
Hang on.
There.
This one.
Yeah, so they're not saying, I think what they would say is, not that all the other states are changing. It's that we're, we are changing because we did not align to basically what, how every other state's model, is what they are trying to say.
But we're still not, we're still not aligning to the other state's model.
That question was asked at the webinar. If they were going to change, what was shared was several would be. I don't know what that means, but, because even if you look at this, even the two, I mean, all three states are different. So...
And their new one doesn't even match the other two.
Correct.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
That's why I think it'll be best if we really rely on those student growth percentiles, so we can look at each student individually and see how they're growing year-over-year as compared to the standards and the assessment that they're being evaluated with.
And I might add, you know, one of the things that I think is helpful when we look at this data and when we've looked at some of this in the past, it's that... So I think an easy way to think of it, just like a little assessment 101, but there's kind of two different ways we would look at assessment. There's criterion-referenced and norm-referenced. Criterion-referenced is, you know, being assessed against a certain standard or a piece of criteria, right? And norm-referenced is how a student compares to the general population who also takes this assessment. One of the things that's complicated with these state accountability assessments is they try to do both of those things, right? They try to give you a cri, they try to do a criterion-reference test, but give you this norm-referenced perspective. So they try to tell you, here's how the kid does based on this expectation or standard. And then also, here's how that compares to everyone else. And that makes it complicated when you're trying to do both things. The, one of the things that I think is helpful for us to look at as a board team is that norm-referenced piece. And that's the one where I think we've seen, you know, you see, how do, where does this kid fall? Or where do our scores fall in like that percentile rank compared to everyone else? And that's where we see, that's where we can get a good idea of how we're faring compared across the state or nationally. Because you can look at the SAT or the ACT, you can look at norms of that nationally, right? And so I think that data, we will be able to see regardless. Like where are we falling on a norm distribution? Where do these scores for our district and our state fall on that norm distribution? And that's what I think will be interesting to see, to your question, Paul, because I think some of the preliminary things we're hearing are, is that, like to be proficient in third grade, you have to be at the 53rd percentile, right? So you'd have to be just above average. But to be proficient in math in seventh grade, you have to be at the 63rd percentile. So better than 63% of the kids. And that seems a little wonky. And we're still going to try to figure out why that, like why that might be. And again, we haven't even seen all the data yet. But I think it's that norm data... But I think it's that norm data that's gonna be able to tell us, how are we comparing? And how are our kids faring compared to that broader population who's also performing on all these assessments, right?
My only concern about using the S A T or the A C T, those are when your students are already sophomores, juniors, seniors. It's a lagging indicator. It's too late, if, if I may say that. They had, I mean, you, you need something more normative, is that the right word? Earlier on for you, in order to assess how your students are doing in, in that case. And I understand it's great to see and how we're doing with our kids that are in, near the end of their academic career in high school. But the value would be more early on.
And, go ahead.
And that's where those benchmark assessments that we give are so help, so helpful. Because those are what we're using to see, you know, growth from like trimester to trimester across the years. We can look at a student, you know, from first grade through eighth grade as they take those assessments.
Are there correlations between those assessments and, and, and how students will typically do with some of the A C T, S A T later on in their career?
Each of the assessments protocol have concordance tables that they've created that they say will help you indicate the level of proficiency, yes.
And I would say that goes back to Stephanie's question too, because MAP does that. But MAP is what gives us that at the elementary level, right? So we can see where our kids are falling and how they're making that progress at that level. So that's why that test is so important at those.
And that gives us that opportunity before, as you said, possibly too late. You know, first through eighth grade to intervene and put things in place.
Anyone else? Just briefly, I understand in education as in life that there are often conflicting goals and aims. And I certainly appreciate the effort on the part of the state to simplify, which I'm not sure we're succeeding at, this measurement. I also appreciate that there are states that probably don't want the test to show how their students are doing compared to Illinois students. Just as an example. So I hope that with all of that in mind, that the state board can come up with a pretty rational number to move the situation ahead and show parents accurately how their students are doing. So thank you for your efforts, Jeanette.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, next item four is public comments. Bonnie, do we have any public comments? Would anyone like to make any public comment at this time? Okay, item five legislative updates, anything to report?
I don't have anything for us tonight.
Thank you, Jackie. Superintendent's report.
Thanks so much, I'm getting connected, are you getting, oh, okay. Let me try this again here, I'm gonna connect real quick.
We are so fast.
Yeah.
There we go. No.
Please hold, thank you.
So we can all sign into as a count?
I don't know, it's not. Drat.
Well, Andy, Paul, you're asking about the acronyms. Do you even, do we, do you know what S A T, I had to look it up, S A T and A C T stand? I actually did, I had to look it up.
Scholastic Aptitude Test.
Is this scholastic or student anyway? The A C T is American College Test.
Is it really? I don't think I knew that.
Right, right, just an acronym.
Are you connected still by chance? Can you open, can you open Board Book and pull it up from Board Book maybe? Thank you, I don't know why. I think I tried, I messed it up because I tried to connect while you were still connected. And now it's being difficult. It just says, available displays can't find, oh wait, don't connect. Here we go. All right, it's coming. Thank you, everyone, I'm sorry. Come on, baby. Okay.
All right, thank you, I apologize for that, thanks, everybody. Just a few things for us to, to talk through tonight, and I'm glad to have the opportunity to share with you. As we have our first meeting after the school year, 2526 has started with our theme of all together now and, you know, working together on important issues. Because we have a lot of important issues and a lot of challenging ones to work through. And, you know, our message with our staff when we got back together was really if we can approach these challenges with positivity and peace and love and joy and a collaborative intentionality, then, you know, we really do think we can come together and contribute to something bigger, which is what our school district is. We had a great kickoff acknowledging that last week. And we want to carry that through for the rest of the 2526 school year. So first, just excited to highlight our first days of school this past year. It was a great week last week, getting started with staff on Monday and then kids arriving in most of our facilities last Thursday and Friday. Was able to get around to see everybody. And today was our last first day with GELP starting school today, so it was nice to see them. And, boy, preschool teacher. I mean, getting those threes and fours inside today. I was, I was out there and they got everybody in and then one of the buses rolled up. It was a little bit late because of some traffic and she said, I have three to take inside. And I said, I better go get reinforcements. If there's one, I was gonna be willing to try it by myself, but three of them, I went to get a little extra help. But sincerely, we've had a great start all the way around. And I just, thanks to everybody in the community and for, for all of that work. And I had to take this picture on the bottom left because is there anything more fun than going out at the recess and the bucket of balls is all brand new, right? And that's like, that's like the best. So want to take a little time and just to highlight briefly all the summer capital projects that were done. We've talked about this many times. And schools are in this very unique space where, you know, we have these big capital things to do and we can't do them when we've got everybody in the building. And we have this short, two and a half is month window to get all of this work done. And, you know, kudos yet again to everyone on our team for being able to help us do that. We had a lot of work completed over the summer. It was sincerely kind of up till, up until the last minute like it always is. But we got everything done and we were ready for kids to come back. We had some of the big projects, we've talked about these before, but basically I would say they fall into kind of three basic categories. One is mechanicals and H V A C kind of work. We had that done at several buildings. And I think this is important to note because that meant that in a lot of our spaces across the district, you know, the A C was off, you know, all summer. And that meant our custodians were working eight, 10 hours a day doing all those things they do to get the buildings ready. That meant, you know, in some cases, our staff and administration, and we had to have back to school events. And some of that stuff wasn't all operational, so grateful to everybody for working through all of that. But all of that got done, everything got kicked on just before school got started everywhere. And feel like we're in good shape with those. We also, some fire systems that got done. You know, we had an experience this summer, as you all recall, with, we had a fire in one of our buildings. And we saw how important and valuable it was having those systems being up to date and functioning properly. It protected our building greatly, so we're glad to have those. Then kind of two other quick things, we had several elevators. Our elevators were aging and, you know, that's obviously a safety issue. So we've updated several elevators this summer and we'll have more coming. Did a little bit of roofing and I think the coolest one that people are most excited about would be the library at the high school had a renovation and it's a much more modern space, much more usable space. And I think the kids are excited to see that and be in there and our staff is as well. So it's pretty cool, kind of a more modern learning space. So want to thank our operations team for that. Want to thank our construction partners, you know, everybody was putting in a lot of time. And as you all know, we're now looking ahead to our future needs with our facility conditions assessment that we talked about a little bit at our last meeting. We're gonna be getting some dates out about potential retreat for the board to have an opportunity to dig into that a little bit. Because we've got a lot of needs coming up. And so that's kind of the next big thing on the horizon when we're talking about capital projects. Any other questions or thoughts or comments on that stuff?
The top right picture, part of the library renovation?
Yeah.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, so they're cool little like, yeah, learning spaces around there and there's TVs in there. They can sit in there and work on projects and stuff, it's pretty cool. Yeah. Next, I said I'd bring back a little more information on this hearing officer question. And then we have an opportunity for the board to consider a question here a little bit later in the agenda. So first, I wanted to bring back what it explicitly says in our policy to share this with you. This goes to some of the questions you were asking, Paul, at our last meeting. So here's what the actual language in, in this policy says. Before a student may be expelled, the student and his or her parent or guardian shall be provided a written request to appear at a hearing. The student and his or her parent or guardian may offer evidence and otherwise present reasons why the student should not be expelled. The hearing shall be conducted by the board or a hearing officer appointed by it. If a hearing officer is appointed, he or she shall report to the board the evidence presented at the hearing and the board shall take such final action as it finds appropriate. So this is, this is the exact language that's in there. So I think to the question that was asked, this does not say that, our policy does not say that the family has a choice between the board or a hearing officer. It says that the board has the choice to decide that. And the policy also does not say if the board were to appoint a hearing officer, that the family would say still have an opportunity to come to the board. The family has an opportunity for a hearing and it's up to the board to decide how that hearing is facilitated. Fair enough?
Okay. The parents, if, if they disagree with the board or the hearing off, the hearing officer or eventually the board's decision, they still have the right to take, to go to court, correct?
Correct, they absolutely have the right to appeal that to court, good question, yes. So how that process would look again, if we did choose to implement this process. And again, I think it's important for the public to know when we're talking about this. These are very rare circumstances in our community, this is not something that happens very often. And that's why we're talking about it now. So if that very rare instance does occur, we're not behind the eight ball and we can have had some thorough and thoughtful conversation about it. So, you know, how this process would work is if we wanted to move forward and potentially have a hearing officer in place to use in that rare scenario. You know, I, admin, me generally, would review and vet potential hearing officers and bring a proposal for services forward to you all as the board. You know, the board would vote on that proposal. And then should the board approve that proposal, it wouldn't mean that we would have to use that hearing officer in all circumstances, but it would just mean now we do have a hearing officer in place should an event occur at some point in the future that the board decides we need to use one. If that hearing officer is requested, I think this is a question some of you had, Molly had, I think, about the hearing officer. Generally, it seems like, you know, you'd hire that person, they'd be at an hourly rate, it's around 250 an hour. They'd conduct the hearing as required by the school code. And again, they come with that expertise in knowing exactly how to do all of that. They provide a written report that would include fact finding. How was everything done in compliance with the law and policy and code? Summaries of all the texts, of all the testimonials, the exhibits, the artifacts, their finding of the facts. And then they would share the administrative recommendation and then their formal recommendation for the board. For the board then ultimately to make a hearing and, or to make a decision. And, you know, I will share that in some of the hearing officers I've spoken to, they shared that, you know, then it's up to the board. And, you know, they can certainly come and share, give insight to the board if the board has questions. But boards can and certainly do sometimes make different decisions than what's been recommended. So the question on the table, and I'm happy to answer more questions, or I don't know if this is an opportunity for you, for you all to have some conversation. We can have it later on the agenda too. But I think the appropriate next step would be a vote tonight to consider the question is, should, should you task me with seeking a formal proposal for services for use of a potential hearing officer in student disciplinary matters at some point in the future?
And as some of you can see, the next item on the agenda is to discuss this and consider whether to vote or not, but that's the next step. Anything else?
Yeah, I've just got one more here and then we can talk about that one next. Just as we're getting started for the school year, I wanted to give a shout out to our transportation team and share some transportation fun facts with you all. That's Mike Heine, he's an example of our awesome bus drivers. We were making a video for opening day and I called over and I said, I need somebody to be part of a cockamamie scheme. And Mike's like, I'll do it. You know, and then we needed to get a bunch of choir kids to the opening day. And a bunch of drivers said, yep, I'll do it. That's just the kind of, of people we have on this team. But I thought this data might be important for our community to know. Because I know sometimes transportation can be stressful with your kid and, and I think it's important to understand some of these facts that I think are pretty neat. So on any given day, we could transport as many as 3,235 kids in our district. You may or may not be aware that here in Geneva, we have a service where families can, families who don't qualify for transportation by the rules and the law can pay to have that transportation. You may not know, the vast majority of districts do not do that. In fact, I don't know of a district that does that besides ours. But that's something we've done and had in place for a long time. And that's why that number's so high, right? You see, you know, over 3,000 kids who could be transported on, on any given day. It's also high partly because we're that unit district. So then when everybody goes to one spot for middle school, right? So a lot, a vast majority of our kids need to be transported over there because there aren't very many walkers who live in that area, for example. But that's, that's a lot of kids, that's 233 individual routes any day. Almost 1,200 unique bus stops. And I think that's probably important to know. Sometimes, and I certainly understand this as a dad, there can be frustration about your bus stop. And I think understanding that there's 1,200, 1,200 of those that our transportation department is managing on any given day is important to know. I think you know this based on information Todd has shared with you in the past, but we have 69 buses covering those routes, 67 drivers and six monitors. And over 2,100 miles driven every day. And I think this is important to note, that is just on our school routes. That is not counting any field trips, that is not counting any extracurriculars, kids going to things before or after school. That 2,170 miles is just on our kids getting back and forth to school routes. So that's a lot, we're doing, a lot of good people doing a lot of work to get our kids back and forth safely every day. Just wanted to acknowledge that. And that's all, Larry. And that's all, Larry. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy, and those numbers are indeed impressive. I wouldn't have guessed them to be that high if someone had asked. So thanks for that. So that's the superintendent's report. Item seven, board dialogue topics and pending action consideration. And remarkably, we don't usually have something there, but this time we do. The question is, should the board task the administration with seeking a formal proposal for hearing officer services for potential use in the future student disciplinary matters? I'll address it just a little bit. I have complete faith that this board could arrive at a fair and just decision facing any of these issues. Nevertheless, this board won't be around forever, and it may be prudent to have such a resource at our disposal should it be required. Any questions or discussion that anyone would like to bring up?
I, I do. If you don't mind, Andy, I'm just gonna kind of talk a little bit about how I'm understanding it. If I understand this correctly, should we have a, have this officer, the hearing officer put into place? When a matter comes up, the board decides at that time if they're going to kind of hand off to the hearing officer or handle more internally. Then should we hand off that person conducts the hearing, gathers all the information, and then presents it to us in a summary? We then read through the summary, determine if, yes, we are going to go along with recommendations, make tweaks, edit, and then get back to the family with a, kind of the final answer. Yes, I, I do recognize that a hearing officer can be, can help to appear and have trans, or appear as though, you know, more, are less biased, like that's kind of the appeal to it, making sure that it's, it's someone a little bit more removed. However, I'm a big fan of making use of our time and resources. It's, to me, it feels that there's a lot of overlap and a lot of redundancy and time doubling up on tasks and then the cost to it. So my hesitancy is more in the, if we're already gonna sit down and kind of comb through what, what the matter is, determine if we're gonna hand it off, have that person do it, and then double check the work. It just seems like we're kind of redoing everything. So that would just kind of be my one where I may be a little bit more hesitant in this. But I can understand the importance should a matter come up that really needs somebody removed.
Yeah, and I, I think that's a great point, and I think I would add two, two things quick. One, noting that, you know, note, I guess, please note, I didn't come with a recommendation on this. I don't have a recommendation on this. I really think this has been a great discussion. I don't have a strong kind of feeling. I think we could make either one of these things work, and, and we have. So I think this came up as a question, and there has been good dialogue over a series of meetings on that. And can, I'm happy to help facilitate kind of whichever way it goes. I do think another piece that's probably worth noting is that in most cases, I think we would, I think we have to be candid and fair to say, if we were going to, to go in this direction, I think we would probably default to one or the other. Because in most cases, we're not gonna have the opportunity for the board to come together, make a formal decision about, are we gonna use a hearing officer or not? And then go do all of that stuff. So I think if we were going to have someone, then what you would also then likely do is say, well, our default is either we're gonna default to empowering the administration and Andy to kind of deciding and making that recommendation about which way we go. Or we're going to default to always using that person or default to not using that person and just have it there as a backup. So I'm glad you asked that process question, because I think that's important for us to know. Because if we get in that situation, you're right, we're not gonna have the time to come together and decide if we are gonna do that and then do that. It's gonna have to be either kind of I'm empowered to make one choice or the other, or the board chooses to default one way or the other.
Other questions?
Sure.
So if the hearing officer is conducting the hearing, the same people would be in the room as if we had done it, except we just, as the board members, would not be in the room. So we'd have our attorney there, assuming a principal, somebody else might be in the room, family. So just kind of how we've done it before.
Correct, correct. It would look, look exactly the same.
Okay.
I guess I just have a comment in regard to, and I, what are we trying to make? First of all, what are we trying to make a decision on whether or not to move forward with trying to find? Okay.
Yep.
So this won't be our last kick at the can in terms of we, we have, okay. So I guess my, my, I guess my comment is, I'm trying to put myself in two positions. If I was a parent that, that had a student that, and I wanted a hearing, I feel as a parent, and luck on wood, I've never been in the situation, but that I would want a hearing in front of the board versus a hearing in front of an individual that would be what I would see as kind of a third party person that would be. I would, I would, I would, as a parent, I would rather state my case and advocate for, for my student or my child in front of the board versus in front of here. And that's just me. That's me. That's, I don't know if that's the case for, but that's just what it would be for me. The other thing is, I think there's a, because there's two things, I could say maybe there's more, but two things I'm thinking of as a school board member that, that we, that are important. One is graduation, and one is a hearing, like a disciplinary hearing. And I think, and, and they're totally polar opposites in terms of, but, but they're important because in, let's say, graduation, we would never have a third party person be the, the, you know, the mediator or whatever that, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna have that person approve the graduation of the students. We do that as a school board. Same thing as in terms of discipline, we, you know. I don't know. It just, it just feels like there's, I guess that's the last of the reason. I guess the first reason would be more the, you know, as a parent, what I want, you know, what I want.
Those two go together for sure, though. I totally.
Any others on here?
One, one last ques, one, I'd like to make a couple comments. One, I did assume that you would be the one we give authority to, to decide whether we bring in the, the hearing officer or we handle it internally elsewhere. So the second point is, tonight is only about whether or not we do go out and source, so that's a different issue. I think the issue that I have a concern about, I think you've mentioned it now also, that maybe the right place to take that is the policy committee and change the policy to give a parent the right to appeal if we do use the hearing, at least appeal to the board. Because to be honest with you, knowing how this board and most boards work, when we do have the, the hearing officer in front of us, we're probably gonna go through the whole thing anyway with everybody trying to ask, you know, everybody asking questions, digging as deep, because it's such a serious issue. Now, there may be cases where, and we might have had some like this in the past, where the parent would say, I agree with what you're doing. I'm not gonna take it further. And, which would be fine. But I would, I'm still struggling, as you might guess, with if, if the hearing officer says, we're gonna use the alternative, you know, in lieu of suspension, we're gonna use the alternative. And I'd really hate for this, for the district to have to go to court rather than at least have one more chance for them to state their case. They can always take us to court. That's always their right.
Right.
But this at least might direct it differently if they feel they have a fair hearing. That's, those are my only comments on that.
And, and in the process, is there three outcomes that could come out of it? So I'm hearing from, from your superintendent's report, there, there could be a recommendation from the administration, recommendation from the hearing officer, and then we could, as a board, we could make our own recommendation.
Yeah, so theoretically, right, how this would go is the administration would be making that recommendation. That's why the hearing would be coming. And then if you had the hearing officer in place, the hearing officer would basically preside over that. Basically, the hearing officer would then consider the administration's recommendation and make a formal recommendation to the board on, yes, here's what I believe you should do regarding the.
And it could go along with the administrator, administration recommendation, or it could be something different.
Could, correct, correct. And then would make that formal recommendation that would come to this body who ultimately has the sole authority to make that decision.
Okay.
Where that group could again, you know, theoretically follow that recommendation or do something different.
All right, I'm, I'm listening to you speak, and I'm getting a sense that there is an awareness of our responsibility in these cases and a sense that this might be not only increasing the bureaucracy, but deferring our responsibility and not doing our job.
Can we take an official vote on it? Because that's not how I feel.
That's not how you feel, okay. We should take a vote on it. I was just expressing my opinion.
Oh, okay, sorry. I thought we were summing up, so.
Well, I am kind of summing up because I appreciate that. The, the biggest problem I can see with this is that we're kind of passing off the decision, and even though it's ultimately ours to make, the more layers of people dealing with the situation, the more distant and removed it seems. And so, as I said earlier, I have absolute faith that this board could arrive at a fair decision. I guess the question would be, even though we're, not really, we don't have to have a motion or anything like that, or we can, if you'd like to have a motion to hire or not to hire such a person. Does anyone care to make a motion? Pick one.
The motion, though, that was presented.
Proposed is to hire.
No.
No.
To seek, should I seek a proposal?
Or seek a proposal. We have an opportunity to
Still say no.
To still say no later on.
Yeah.
That's what.
That's the way I read it.
Yes. That's, that's what I'm advocating for today is either say, seek, seek a proposal or, you know, somebody say, either you move that Andy goes and finds a, you know, proposal, brings, brings a proposal forward to the boards, for the, to the board for consideration for bringing on a hearing officer or not.
Just like you asked, are there, are there firms that do this, or are there attorneys?
Oh, sure.
I think Andy was saying most districts use a hearing officer.
Yeah, most districts do do this for that kind of legal protection, having someone who comes with that expertise. So yeah, my experience is that, and the folks I've talked to anyway, informal, anecdotal, right? I don't have formal data. But most districts, my experience is to use that structure for, for some of those reasons that we've talked about in previous meetings.
We, I'm trying to remember, we, we have, we have to have attorneys that come to the, yeah, so.
That's why I asked that question.
Yeah.
That's why I asked, that the attorney would still be here for the board.
So I, what is it? Is it, is it, are you, is it an additional legal protection then?
Yeah, so if you think about it, when, I guess, you know, very candidly and transparently, the way to think about it is when you have that happen, you've got, you know, theoretically, the attorney who's there representing the district based on what the recommendation was, right? Based on, basically, recommend, you know, supporting the administrative work that the district has done, right? So you have basically that attorney, maybe theoretically you have an attorney on the other side, then this person would be coming on, almost serving like a judge, as it were. If you think about it that way.
But we take the final decision.
Correct.
The board takes the final decision, so every, we have that responsibility.
Correct.
We cannot delegate that.
No, that's 100% correct.
Right, right. Yeah, so I think I can share my opinion. It, it hasn't shifted much from what I felt in the past. I ha, like, I do appreciate all the perspective and the conversation. I think like Dan shared what his perspective was, mine would be quite different, honestly. And it's not because I don't trust anybody on this board, but I just know that this board is not a group of experts on these issues. So I would like somebody who was an expert of how these things work and maybe what works best. And that doesn't mean that we haven't done a great job and thought through different options for cases. But I always wonder, was that the best or just what we knew was available and who was bringing the information forward to us? So I think it's important because whether we have our lawyers or the administrators giving us recommendations on what to do, do we have a more impartial person saying, here's what generally happens in these cases, rather than here's what generally Geneva 304 does in these cases? And that's kind of important to me because I feel like there's a, there's a huge amount of expertise that I am lacking in these matters, and I like to lean on experts. The same way that there's plenty of times that we have to call our lawyer to ask questions when board things come up, because we're like, we're not really sure. We're not the experts on this. So that's why it's important to me, but I don't think that that means I'm firmly at like, this is the best decision. But I don't see why we wouldn't at least seek out some more information in making that decision as we continue to look at this. And, and like Dr. Barrett said, this has not come up that often, so I know it's not something that needs to take all of our time and a deep consideration. But I do feel like it's important to have that as an option. Although as Dr. Barrett explained, it's less of an option than I had anticipated it to be, and maybe that does mean we need to look at the policy. I don't think that that, I think that that is definitely potential and idea, and it made me think like, well, what, this is the press policy and what we pretty much go with? What have other districts that already use hearing officers go with? And kind of looking at that. I think that that, that is a great idea as well.
Okay, yeah.
And I want to mention this too. It gets to your question, Dan, about legal. We already have our attorney here. It's also so that that hearing officer knows exactly what you can and cannot ask. And we, again, are not the experts in knowing something that we are allowed to say or not say or ask or not ask. I don't know everything that we're not allowed to say or ask, and it's also that legal protection for us. Somebody like Larry said, a future board member, doesn't know, and they say some inappropriate things in that hearing, well, then that family could also sue for us saying things like that. So I think that's for having that officer, because they know that. But I'm not trying to sway anyone either way, but I just wanted to answer that question a little bit.
I'm just trying to figure then, what does our attorney, our attorney doesn't, doesn't provide that information? Okay, these are things that you can ask or can't, I mean, are we doubling up, like Molly said, on, on services?
I, I don't know if the attorney knows everything that's in the board members' head that they're gonna ask and say during.
Well, I don't, I don't know if a hearing officer does either, though.
Well, if the board was asking, we wouldn't have the hearing officer there. So the board would be asking a question, but the hearing officer knows what they can legally ask and not ask or say and not say and something like that.
We, we've all had one experience doing this. I was sitting back and relaxing. We've all had one experience with the hearing, and it was a very serious matter which the board dealt with effectively. I think I've done one more since I've got longer service, but it's still a very rare event. I'll go with the, with the pleasure of the board in terms of this thing, but it's just to look into the process, which seems we all were really asking now. It seems very harmless.
I agree.
Could, could I get clarification on then what the exact, because I just want to know like where, when does the vote then come in of, okay, so tonight we're deciding if we just want a proposal? And then what would the next step be? Because I just want to know what my, where my voice will be down the road as far as, you know, making that final determination of when we get the proposal. Yes, we are, no, we're not.
Assuming that we vote to have Andy look into the matter, he will do so and secure an offer of services from a firm or an individual that does this sort of thing. And then he will bring that to the board, and we will say, yeah, we'd like to have them in our back pocket or no, thanks. And that would pretty much set in motion one way or the other. There may be some changes to the board policies as a result of that decision to make it work more effectively, but that's probably a rather minor thing. Anybody that want to add or change any of that?
I think that's right, Larry. I think in addition, that would be the time where we would talk, we would need to talk about, okay, what's, if we, if that came forward and the board was going to approve having that person in our back pocket, then the question would be, what's the default until, say, the policy committee has had more conversation or something like that? That would be the time to say, what's the default? It's the default, we're empowering Andy to. That would be the time to say, what's the default? It's the default, we're empowering Andy to kind of make that decision? And is the default to say, well, we're not gonna go in this direction? Or is the, unless um, you know. Or we are gonna kind of default to just using that as the practice. So I think that next time. We would need to do that at some point, cause we don't wanna end up in a scenario where. Something, that's what we're trying to avoid here with all this good thoughtful conversation. Is getting behind the eight ball when something has happened and then say, oh gosh, do we wanna do this or not? So I do think it's fair to ask, cause at some point we have to, this group has to decide, are we doing it or not?
Can, can, one last question, uh, as we move through this process, and maybe this is too early to discuss it. But I would assume if we do have a hearing officer. He or she would first receive a, a recommendation from the administration. As to their direction in that specific case. So he or she could easily just say, yes, I'm, you know, after looking through this, I agree this is the right thing, or we'll have a hearing. But they're not necessarily bringing alternative resolutions to the problem.
You mean in the case of a specific hearing?
Yes.
They might.
They might, but they could very easily just say, we wanna go with what the administrat- I, I agree with the administration on this.
Yeah, yeah, their findings could be.
Yep.
A hundred percent, we support administration, right, right.
An interesting question that would be helpful to know is. In boards that have hearing officers, how often does the hearing officer disagree with the initial recommendation of the administration in the case? Because if it's never, then we're wasting our time. And if it's all the time, then it bears a careful looking at.
Yeah, I think um, in my preliminary investigation into this, the candid answer I think would be um, seldomly.
Much more diplomatic.
So sometimes, um, you know, not all the time, not, not very often, but sometimes they do. Um, and it would bo- mostly be based on if they felt that. There were some compliance practices that maybe, you know, some, some things weren't done the way they should have been done or things like that. Candidly, that I think would be less likely to happen in our district, cause I think we're good at being by the book. But I think those would be, it's seldom would be the answer to that.
So, let's say we have, as Larry said, a hearing officer in our back pocket, hip pocket. How would the process work again? So then, there's expulsion, there's hearing and a. Student for request to appear at a hearing and then. And then, so do, what, what, what's the process of, the, the parents get to choose or do we choose or how does, what, what's the?
I'll tell you candidly what I think, I think um. Frankly, I think a lot of this goes to how much uh. Trust you would have in me to basically make, evaluate the situation as it's happening. And then make a recommendation to the board and say. Board, this is coming up, based on the circumstances of, of this. I'm recommending we go in the direction of using our hearing officer for this issue. Or based on the circumstances and my evaluation of this situation. I don't think we need to do that in this circumstance, um, and we'll have a hearing before the board. So I, I understand that that's part of what makes this heavy, because I mean, I think ultimately you're gonna have to empower someone. And you know, I'm your own, technically I'm your own lay employee, right? So you're gonna have to empower me to make that determination. Unless you want to say, we're always doing it, or. I, I think the board kinda has two choices, you either say, we're gonna default to always doing that. Or we're gonna default to empowering the superintendent to kind of make that determination in each instance, I think. Cause if you were gonna say, we're gonna default to not doing it. Then I think to Larry's point, then why do it? Then, you know, why go forward and put that in place then? We've got a sound group of people here who can make those decisions. So I don't think if, if the default was gonna be. And I don't do it, then there's probably not a need to do that. Does that seem right?
Any other discussion?
I think that makes sense to me. I do think that there were things that were brought up tonight that make me think more about this. And what maybe if we did adopt a hearing officer, what our policies and procedures would be around that. So I feel like. One way or the other, I don't know that I'm ready to say no on it, I just, I, I almost have more questions or more thoughts about how might that look? In, eh, eh, with what everyone brought up.
This might be a possible situation to discuss at a retreat. However, as president, I'm gonna use one of my few prerogatives and call the question. We've spent enough time to develop thoughtful ideas, there's no real commitment here, so.
So I'll, I'll make the proposal to have Andy do a search and bring forward to the. Board a proposal for a hearing officer.
Second.
Aye.
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 Nay.
Aye. Okay, that, uh, that was fun, um.
That's what it's supposed to be though. That's really good, that's what it's, that's what this is supposed to be, it's good.
I'm well satisfied. Item eight on the agenda, work, study topics, future action consideration, there's a whole laundry list of policies. And so forth, and Stephanie, anything?
Yeah, so um, thank you for all that policy discussion we just have, so I feel like I'm stealing the show tonight. These are some policies that have been updated and the policy committee went over earlier in August. You can um, take a look back at that meeting, we did have kinda went through and summarized most of them. A lot of these are just updates, not even updates, but just meant for us to review. And just as a reminder, we do have policies in place that we have to review certain, review all policies every five years. So there might not be changes, it's just for us to read and make sure that's in line with what we're thinking. And a refresher on some of the policies that we have as a district. There are a couple of changes in there as well, but nothing too large. So just let me know if you guys have any questions.
Any questions?
No.
Uh, there's no action required at this time. And the item nine, information, the board meeting presentation schedule and FOIA requests, so we've seen those in board book. No discussion is required unless anybody has any questions. The item ten, consent agenda, my favorite. Item one, personnel report, resignations, retirements, leave requests, changes in assignments, full-time equivalent, new hires. Item two, monthly financials for July. Item three, gifts, grants, bequests, three thousand dollars to Judy Saxton, Jody Saxton. Properties LLC, one thousand five hundred to Elburn Market, one thousand five hundred for GHF. S Athletic Supplies Uniforms and Purchases. Item four, gifts, grants and bequests, four thousand five hundred dollars, Biscuit Cafe Inc., one thousand five hundred dollars Geneva feeder basketball. One thousand five hundred dollars girls' basketball and one thousand five hundred dollars for boys' basketball for GHF. S Athletic Supplies Uniforms Purchases and Needs. We very much appreciate these generous gifts and we'd like to thank all of the givers for their support of the school system. We need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye. Item eleven, board member comments and reports. Why don't we start with Stephanie who hasn't had a chance to talk much tonight, so.
Sure, so I just wanted to say welcome back to all of our students and staff and our families. I know it's been a busy couple weeks as we wrap up the summer and all the back to school events. And those will continue with curriculum nights coming up and some more events. I was able to attend the corn boil this year and just always a great event, very community based, great to recognize. Our marching band, our dancers, our athletes across all fall sports, something that I think is really unique to Geneva. And I love that we, we do that every year and thank you to the sports boosters for managing all of that and hosting and ordering all the food. It's just a lot of work and that's all volunteer based, so thank you so much. Also, I wanted to thank um, some of the groups that Andy had shared in his superintendent report, so facilities. You know, there was a time where I was in the school towards the end of the year and I wasn't sure it was all gonna come together. We still had some hot areas of the high school when I was first there for registration. And then by the, you know, fourth day of walking the freshman's schedule, everything was so cold in there, I had to go out and get my jacket. So it had drastically shifted, so thank you everyone for working hard to pull that all together. Um, and then transportation, I think, you know, I always say we're big Disney fans and that Disney has great public transportation. But really, school buses are our kids' first use of public transportation and it's just so reliable. And what a great experience for them with all the great different staff members we have, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Jackie.
Yeah, I wanna echo that, say welcome back everyone, it's, it's exciting to have everyone and. See the buzz in the town again when all the students are back and I'm. Excited to start going to football games and enjoying all the band concerts and theater things that are coming up this year. I do wanna give a special shout out to Ms. Sims tonight for your presentation. It's not easy presenting on a complex topic when you don't have all the information yet. But you're giving us information and our parents so that we can start digesting it with what you have. And then like you said, you'll come back and share more as we have more information, so I, I just wanted to recognize you for that. And then Dr. Barrett, the kickoff was wonderful. I know that you put a lot of time and effort as well as a lot of other people. All the silly videos are really fun to watch and see how many different people participate. And I know that you call on other people too to help put that together, but it is a great way to start the year in a positive way. So thanks for taking all that extra time to put that together.
Paul?
Yeah, I also would like to thank everybody for, and congratulate everybody for the start of the new year, all the students and the staff and the teachers. I also really much enjoyed the kickoff, it's always, this is my second time and I just sat back and, and it was, it was fun. It was a lot of fun and I think everybody enjoyed it. I live close to the Western Avenue School and I get out early in the mornings and walk my pups. And I really enjoy seeing all the parents walking to school and bringing the little ones uh, to, to, to school, the first days of school. So it's been kind of a fun beginning, uh, for a couple of days here to see everybody out before the weather turns. And luckily, it's gotten enjoyable weather, I shouldn't say anything.
It's been so nice, now you've jinxed it, Paul.
I know, I'm sorry, for that I'll shut up.
Way to go, Paul.
I would echo everything that's been said already, um, Jackie to your point with Shawnette, I, I share the same thoughts as that. But um, thank you to all of our staff across the board, um, teachers, O N M, bus drivers. I, you know, all the little letters home to students before the school year and the little packages and prepping the rooms and, and everything. Uh, but also to our families who are adjusting to a whole different routine right now. I know last week and this week is full of um, supply drop offs and curriculum nights and back to school events. So I know families are very busy this time of year, um, so to all of our friends and family in the community supporting these events. I, I thank you all and I wish everybody a great, successful year.
I echo whatever I said and I won't repeat whatever, but I, I agree with everyone, excited about the, the start of the new year. A couple of things that uh, popped in my mind as we're starting the new year that, throughout this year that I'd, I'd um. One thing that I think would be interesting to get a report on would be. How the new, with the high school, oh, I'm sorry, the middle school and then the new um. No team center and all that, I, I just would like to get an update at some point.
Coming for sure.
Okay, good, great. Um, uh, the other thing was the opening day, that was awesome to be a part of that. And I, this year, um, with more students being involved in the, in opening, it was, it was awesome, so. Yeah, I think uh, outdid yourself again there, Andy, and everyone that helped with that. Besides all the fun, I think it would, I, I appreciate the um. One of the themes that you had in there was um. We have an important year ahead of us as a school board and with teachers and all that. And so I think it's important just to kinda keep that in mind and perspective as well of this year, so. Looking forward to it and it's a, it's gonna be a great, it's gonna be a great year and looking forward to everything that's coming up.
I agree with everything that everybody said and like Dan, I'm not gonna echo those remarks. But thanks to everyone who works in the district and does such an excellent job. It's a joy to be a part of such a well-run machine. Having said all that. I appreciate the board's excellent discussion this evening. I thought it was intelligent and well-rounded and you're all wonderful, so thanks for that. And then how about a motion? To.
To.
Adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Thank you very much.